Hello, everybody. Welcome to this Sebastopol City Council meeting of October 16, 2014. City clerk records show that all council members are present. Please stand and join me in the seat of debate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standness, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I made one proclamation this evening, recognition of Veterans Day, November 11, 2014. Vice Mayor Slater will leave the proclamation. So I did invite our local VFW, but they meet at the same time, so they chose to go to their meeting and we'll get this proclamation to them.
I haven't watched you begin.
Begin.
I didn't say that. So, this is a Veterans Day proclamation, recognizing veterans and noticing everybody that is Veterans Day. Whereas on Veterans Day, our nation comes together to honor our veterans and commemorate the legacy of profound service and sacrifice they have upheld in pursuit of a more perfect union. And whereas, the selflessness of our service members is unmatched, and they remind us that there are few things more fundamentally American than doing our utmost to make a difference in the lives of others. And whereas, serving as teachers and engineers, parents, and local government employees, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serve as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas, the Honorable Mayor Robert Jacob, Vice Mayor Patrick Slater, and the City Council of the City of Sebastopol wish to honor all citizens who have served our country as veterans and continue serving in our community. Now therefore, being proclaimed by the Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council of the City of Sebastopol that all citizens have served the day with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and the seal of the Stadium Sebastopol this 21st day of October 2014, signed by Robert Jacob and Patrick Slater. So we will get that to our Goldridge Chapter of the VFW.
I'd just like to point out, there's at least four veterans in this room right now, probably more so. Just wanted to recognize you, remain equal.
Thank you. In approval minutes, October 7, 2014. Are there any edits, comments, or changes? Seeing as there are motion?
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the approval of minutes, October 9, 2014. Any edits, comments, or changes? Seeing as there are motion, I move approval. All in favor?
Aye.
If I might jump in here, is there, are we doing a change to the agenda for the approval and authorization for Mayor to sign a letter of support for Human Services Department Adult and Aging Division?
Yes, I am for on the consent calendar. It is?
Should we change it?
It's like you're not getting on the table.
Yeah.
So that change has been noticed?
Yes.
You should have received it by email.
I don't know.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items that are not on this evening's agenda? Are there any remarks for the public to reach to by public comment?
Something not in the agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to know.
Yeah, no, it's a possibility of hearing.
Nice try.
Eva Benamita Sester, and I'd like to speak about the bike trails. We're going to be reviewing it on November 18. And I think that there's a couple of things that I really want to review. A layer of four, Burbank Heights and Orchard Senior House. I think what the thing that people don't understand is for seniors, as they begin to age, they become more unstable and they can't respond as fast. And so therefore, going out of their homes becomes more and more problematic. And once you get that set up, people don't want to go out, so in order to support them to take the walk with their carts or whatever it is, they need to know they're going to be safe. If you have bikes whizzing through, you're not safe. It's hard even to see the big cars. You have the issues of vision, you have issues of hearing, and I think people don't understand that, that a lot of those people don't come out of their units. There's probably 160, maybe 170 at this time. And of those 170, there's roughly about 50 that are viable. The rest of them are in seclusion. So if we really want to support our aging population, there's so many roads that those bikes can go on, and they're welcome. But I think I really want to alert you to that piece, because unless you live it, you don't know. You don't know how frail those seniors can become. And I think Chief Weaver can attest to how frail they can become. I just want to say to you, I know, and for the farm, it's such a time of losing our bone, familiar, sensing parts of our being, that we don't understand what it is to just walk quietly amongst things and know what they are, what that really means, because we've gotten so far away from who we really are. So I just wanted to put those two things up.
Hi. I'm Jonathan Ringer. I'm Jonathan Ringer, resident of Sebastopol. Hi, everybody, city council and staff. I want to follow up on what I started with last week, because I was very dismayed and dissatisfied with the answers I received from City Manager Larry McLaughlin and the City Council in terms of the issue of the cost, the transparency of the budget, and the cost of the items that were being considered. I consider myself having worked as investigative financial journalist for more than 30 years with a law degree, a fairly sophisticated financial analyst, and I spent a lot of time overseeing the city budget, going to budget hearings and budget meetings, and looking at the tax consequences. I felt that the response of what I was asking, which was, I felt, a very important and pressing question for our taxpayers, as we're being asked to pay for new taxes for Measure R, was critical and dismissive of the basic notion. And I still have this question, frankly, that I don't know the answer to, and I'm hoping someone might mention it tonight, which is, in response to the question as to what seemed like a 20 percent pay scale raise for four positions, our city manager said, "Well, we're just finishing that up. We've done that for all the employees over the past two years. That's why we're doing this tonight." So, and I understand the difference between the pay scale raise and the annual cost of living adjustment that's made, but it seems to me that there is going to be a very high cost and that we've just decided to increase the pay of, you know, or that the decision has been made over the past few years to increase the pay by 20 percent of all of the city employees, which would cost in about somewhere between four and eight years, over a million dollars a year in real dollar terms. And I really hope you could answer, because I'm probably, maybe I'm reading this all wrong, but I'd really love to see the eventual cost of the pay scale raises, and, you know, I mean, I see Larry lecturing, and I'd like to get more clarity on that, because maybe it's something I don't understand, but what I seem to hear, which wasn't in the minutes, but was at the discussion, is that when he was asked, "Why is this happening now?", he said, "Well, we've done this for all the employees, the pay scale raises, which in the budget was 20 percent, which showed over however many years it had." That, you know, is this going to cost the taxpayers? Is our overall salary range going up by 20 percent? Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Cillian Jung, and I've lived in the rural area of Sebastopol since 2004, and now in the city around two years ago. And I believe, I'm a health advocate, so health is very important to me. And I noticed that the cell tower in town is coming up for contract renewal. I would like to see the city council support a nay. Do not renew the contract. It is a health hazard. And there's a public health moron cards that Linda Berg passes out, and there's lots of reports being done. The city has no business in selling radio microwave radiation as a health hazard to the city. I would like the vision of Sebastopol being an alternative city that it touted to be, to be Wi-Fi free, cell tower free, and truly safe, and not just a name only. Thank you. Oh, excuse me. I do have one more thing. If there's a petition that would help to stop that, I would be willing to start a committee to pass around a petition to stop the renewal of the contract for the cell tower. I don't even know when it's up for renewal. I hope I have time. And the people need to know that they have a right, and the city has a responsibility to keep their citizens safe. Thank you.
Seeing as there are republicans, I'll close by the comment. Is there an opportunity for statements of conference of interest by the city councilors regarding any agenda this evening? Are there any conference interests? Seeing as there are one. I do have a, I do have a member of the public who wishes to comment on item one on the consent calendar. Are there any other consent calendar issues? Great. Lynn, I know you wanted a couple of comments on item one, but that's.
These are my credentials, so it looks like I know what I'm talking about. But first of all, I just want to say, as far as contributing to the match that is needed for the county application for feasibility study, I'm all for it. I think it's very appropriate, a very nice thing to do. It benefits our community more than any other post-permone. And the only requirement I would put on it is what we call the Sebastopol Pedal in the Trail. Please get that in a letter.
Yeah, I've been saying that for months.
I want to point out some, a number of things related to this trail that will relate to what's coming before you at your next council meeting. The county follows a procedure for developing a trail, and the very first step in that is to adopt it into their master plan. The second step is to start studying it and working out all the issues on it. I want us to follow the same plan when we present these trails to you next council meeting. Step one, adopt it into the master plan, and two, then start looking at the feasibility. Just a comment on the timeline, just so you can put some things in perspective when looking at the Grabenstein Trail. The timeline on this Sebastopol Pedal in the Trail is probably a lot longer than you imagine. That, you know, it started, I think, four or five years ago for the applications. The county's been applying for it since. There's probably a one in five chance of them receiving the current funding for the feasibility study that they're going to be applying for this month. And even once it's granted, I think it is a four-year time before the final report has to be in on that. So, talking a lot of time before we even have a finished project on this. And it's probably going to be far more complicated, far more convoluted than you can imagine, because things change. The longer you put it off, the more things change. Down here is a map of some notes that I took when talking to the Boggs family two years ago, that originally, when this project started between the highway and Grabenstein School, we were able to get eight of 10 of the private properties that used to be the railroad right of way. The other two, one, the neighbor said, "We were one and didn't want trail going through his place," and the other, we just could not locate. And with that, the county immediately, well, not immediately, but within months, adopted it into their master plan. We still haven't taken the first step to adopt the Grabenstein Trail that somewhat follows this. And so, I just want to point out the difference in the county's speed and our speed as far as moving along on this. And show you what happens when you wait and wait, and there are a number of situations like that. And I think I should throw out this last thing. All these maps are about the connection between where that trail hits 116 and where it would enter the Sebastopol city limits. It's quite complicated, and it is not going to be an easy solution. There are three possible ways. You know, one along the highway, one is convoluted through all kinds of private property. One fairly nice one, very attractive, would be to follow the creek that's behind the old bossing hand's nursery and swing way around into the Laguna. But none of these ways, that last one, it's a beautiful trail. There's just two neighbors on it, just plain don't want it coming across their land, typical problem. But the point here being is, this trail is not likely to be going through Sebastopol. And what would be proposed at your next meeting is, has a whole different goal, and it's to connect all the neighborhoods with a safe route into town, to connect the neighborhoods so kids can go to school, or an ice cream store, or the pool, or whatever they want, a nice, safe route. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. So we have four consent counterites. Approval recommendation to supplement the local match pledge for the Sebastopol Pedal Bicycle Trail feasibility study. Second, approval of recommendation for extension of interim ordinance, development permanent formal business ordinance. Three, approval of resolution endorsing a county-wide bidding wage proposal. I'm directing staff to send a letter to Sonoma County Board of Supervisors. And the added item, approval and authorization of the mayor to sign a letter of support for Human Services Department Adult and Aging Division, area agency on agents' application.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I was going to pull item one. I've had questions. Mr. Dietler pulled it in advance of my request, so I'd still like to keep that item open. Thank you.
Sure. Item one, do I have a motion to approve items two, three, and 3B?
Some moved?
Move by Councilman Vernon, second by. Last. All in favor? Aye. All right. Which, item four, introduction of.
Are we going to go back to one?
I took, I just, I have consent counterites again, so you can stay on the agenda. Is there any person who would earlier this evening?
They can move to the end, it's fine. I just have some financial questions.
Okay. Item four, public hearing, introduction of ordinance number, Phase One Stormwater Commitment, adoption of low-impact development, and regular stormwater impact development. Do you have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a representative of the county Parks Department here to answer questions about the bicycle, are we grant? No. I would like to make a little bit of a read.
Oh, good.
So if there are financial questions, they probably are appropriately listed, Ken, Tam, or the city on that.
Okay, I guess we're going to back that up a little bit. So we'll go back to item one of the consent calendar. Approval recommendations to supplement local match pledge for the Sebastopol Pedal Bicycle Trail feasibility study. Ken, do you have a staff report?
Quite simply, the county has applied several times with the city's previous support for grants to perform this feasibility study for the Sebastopol Pedaluma Bicycle Trail Feasibility Study. This would be an incredible addition to the county's trail network. It is a complicated undertaking with a lot of different aspects to look at, and it requires a feasibility study to look at all those aspects. Previously, the city had committed kind of the minimum match necessary to study the various limited segment that would be in the city limits. Our, the estimated cost of the feasibility study has increased, but in addition, we're recommending that the council increase its match to demonstrate the city's very strong interest in this project and seeing this realized, and so basically tripling the commitment, which is still pretty small, to the local match if the grant is obtained. And that the source of those funds would be the traffic impact fee account, which has quite sufficient funds for that purpose.
Hey, any questions to staff? Well, actually, you answered one of my questions, was source of funding, traffic impact fund. The staff report indicates the overall estimated cost of the study at $248,000. Do you know how much the anticipated grant, if we're successful and we're getting it, would the amount would be for that?
Hopefully, Mr. Tam could answer that question.
Good evening, councilmembers. Kentam Park Planner for Sonoma County Regional Parks Department. The actual total grant amount, $248,000, is what we asked to cost to do the full study. The reason it costs so much is that we're going to be hiring experts to help us. We're going to be getting engineers, facilitators to help with doing with the workshops. We're going to do a series of studies, looking through a lot of maps and see how the public grant rate we have in the quarter, and that all takes a lot of time to do.
So, the study is $248,000, and you're expecting to get a grant of $248,000, and $6,500, which I admit is not, you know, in the context of this, is not a lot of money. Where does that money get applied?
I'm sorry, it's, the 248 is total cost. The 248 requires 11.47 percent match for the project. So, the city's Sebastopol's contribution is going to be add to the county's match. The county's also kicking down county park navigation fees. We're also getting contributions from the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. We're also going to have a pledge from the San Jose Cycling Club also providing a contribution. And we're still waiting from the city of Sebastopol to also provide some contribution. So far, what I've heard, they have not been able to provide as generous amount as the city has, up to $6,000.
I think you named Pedaluma, right?
I'm sorry, Pedaluma. Yes, that's correct. Sorry. All more reason for it to be the Sebastopol Pedal. This is really a great opportunity for the county, the partnership with the city of Sebastopol, and past with partnership with the city. Currently, we have the existing Joey Doe West County. That was a great example of partnership between county and city Sebastopol's support. If we weren't able to have that support, we wouldn't have that trail here. I may first give you a little history, probably all know the first section of that trail was done back in 1980. First section, so it's taken a long time. And believe it or not, you probably think that all is done. We still have a very small segment down in Forestville we're trying to work out, trying to get back, he's done. So, most of it is actually done, but referring to the West County Joey Doe Trail, there's a small section in Forestville we're trying to wrap that up, get that done. So, to give everybody an idea, these projects takes a long time to do, to kind of get the funding, they pull and piece in all the various funding together. I mean, the Joey Doe West County Trail, we piece together over 20-plus different grants to pull together that funding together.
And as an additional contribution from Sebastopol, we've already produced all the signage that indicates the name of the trail. We're willing to contribute that at no cost to your own.
Sounds great.
Ben, take care of my questions.
Councilman Vernon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, thank you for being here tonight. We really do like the name Sebastopol Pedal in the Trail, so I just want to underscore that with you, and also share with the council and our public tonight, two concerns that I have. First, our map is just kind of a thick line within the city limits. We really can't see where that would go on terms of our physical reality and our street layout. And I understand that a feasibility study, as Sue Kelly has told us, is going to be kind of a wider swath to see where that trail might best go. And for me, it's a concern that the trail not bisect or interfere with the Laguna Apulins property, if we can preserve that with some integrity. And I just want to recall the opposition of the Eleanor Avenue neighborhood, so that we understand upfront, there are going to be some obstacles there, I think very reasonable, and we'll need to deal with them. And won't this be a wonderful transportation alternative and recreational amenity? I think it would just put our county on the map for all the cyclists in California, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, I very much support the idea of the trail.
Vice Mayor, say.
Thank you. The third time, we hope it's a charm, right? This is the third time this application has been made. We've been, we haven't won it the first two times. Sonoma Valley got it, what, last year?
Last year, and now it's the third application as well.
So, we're hoping. So, this is the project that the Bike Walk Sebastopol and the Bike Coalition and everybody kind of came together and raised, was around 20 grand? Is that, that's now being held in escrow, basically by the Bike Coalition? Is that part of the funding?
Yes.
That $20,000 that came from our community?
Yes.
Great. And the, well, just a quick comment, I mean, this is, I think we'll kind of wrap this up rapidly, so I'll just go ahead and make my comment now. As a cyclist, it's the long way around to get from Sebastopol to certainly Katati, but Robert Park. And this is, you take your life in your hands if you try to ride down 116. I won't do it, and I'm a very confident, experienced cyclist. So, to have this trail would just be just the best. So, I'm, it would be gorgeous, yeah. So, full steam ahead as far as I'm concerned. Any more questions to staff? All right, any questions?
I just have one thing to add. The last application, last round that we submitted for the Sebastopol Pedaluma Trail, it was recommended at the staff level. District Four staff actually recommended rewarding the grant to us. However, when it went to the state level, it didn't compete well enough, so we actually got plumped off. But we feel pretty confident this time to go with the order of that. Thank you.
Any fair motion? I will move approval of the Sebastopol Pedaluma Bike Trail Feasibility Study Grant Application Funding. First and second. Eighty-seven. All in favor? Aye. Any votes? Any questions? Thank you.
We'll try this again.
Item number four, introduction of ordinance, Phase One Stormwater Permit. Do you have a staff report? Add objective.
We do, and Christina, with the time, kind of, she should probably turn on the light switch so it starts warming, and I get done working then. Open the door, it's like a little blind. This is, this item is to introduce for our first reading and public hearing, the ordinance to amend municipal code to adopt the low impact development standards for stormwater. The city's required to adopt this, these standards as part of our transition into the Phase One Municipal Stormwater Permit with the cities of Santa Rosa and all the other cities in the plane and Sonoma County. And one of the critical elements that the regional board established for all of us was that we bring, we all get into alignment with the same standard. I'm gonna let Christina talk to you about the nuts and bolts of the ordinance, but this was, it was developed jointly by cities and county, and it's in use for several years of the Santa Rosa and county projects, so it will kind of make a uniform standard throughout Sonoma County for developers, which will be an advantage while we're not all just implementing sort of similar but different ordinances. So this is gonna replace our current urban runoff ordinance and then some. And I'm gonna, without any, I'll let Christina do her PowerPoint. You might wanna rearrange yours, as required.
So some of my audience is down behind me, but good evening, thank you Sue, and good evening, Mayor.
Is your microphone on?
You guys actually, oh, yeah, okay.
Do you want me to switch to slide while you talk? Would that be easier?
That might.
And you can open the microphone. Or you could go up to the front.
How's that? Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So thank you, Sue. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This is our quick agenda, I'll just run through it really quickly. I'll briefly give you the permit background, which we've discussed before in previous meetings, talk about some LID basics, compare the current city Sebastopol runoff ordinance with this LID manual, and talk a little bit about LID impacts, LID examples, and show a lot of nice photos, and then talk about next steps for implementation, and of course, open it up for questions at the end. And just wanted to mention, the photo's already gone, but, that's okay. So this is actually a picture of an LID feature at the Barlow. That's my car right there, so I took a picture, and so just a reminder that you're already doing LID here in the city. Thank you. So just really briefly, the permit background, as Sue has already mentioned, city council authorized joining the Phase One MS4 permit, which is basically a stormwater runoff permit, in June of 2013. And in February 2014, we came back up with the council and asked for the council to adopt a stormwater pollution provision ordinance, which the council did, and that was an ordinance that was a priority set by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And now here we are, before you again, to recommend adoption of the LID manual, and adoption of the LID manual is required by the regional board by December of 2014 for compliance with the permit. So I've got some statements here, actually, from the phase, directly from the Phase One permit, as far as what are the requirements or the goals of LID. So to reduce the increase of impervious surfaces, to mimic the pre-development water balance, we'll discuss that later, encourage filtration, infiltration, and reuse, and minimize pollutant loadings. And again, these are all things that are consistent with what Sebastopol has already been doing. Some brief LID basics, just some key words here for stormwater is to capture, infiltrate, or percolate, treat, and slow the flow for stormwater. And additional goals are also to preserve natural areas and preserve stream setbacks. And that photo right there is actually an LID feature that was installed in Healdsburg. And you probably recognize this photo, Ken, you took this of the Laguna. The LID, the purpose of the LID manual, LID in general, is to reduce stream hydro modification. And hydro modification is changes to the natural conditions of waterways. And so that's one of the goals, is to reduce that, and of course, to improve water quality as well. So local water quality impairment listings. The Laguna de Santa Rosa and the middle stretch of the Russian River are federally listed as being impaired by these pollutants that you can see here, mercury, indicator bacteria, dissolved oxygen, nitrogen, phosphorus, sedimentation, silitation, and temperature. And so the, so LID is one tool that can be used to address some of these pollutants, as well as to reduce hydro modification. And this is just the cover of the LID manual that we're recommending that city council adopt, and since that one on her desk there. This was completed in August of 2011, and it's currently in use by the city of Santa Rosa and the county of Sonoma, and has been since then. And it's been adopted or in the process of being adopted by most of the Phase Two communities in the Russian River watershed, so including Healdsburg, Windsor, Warner Park, Ukiah, and I don't know if Cotati, Cotati has yet, but they're, they're about to. So the LID manual is, basically it's a guidebook for site designers and developers to help with site assessment, BNP selection, and calculating BNP sizing. And so now I'm gonna just talk about a few similarities between this LID manual and the city of Sebastopol's urban runoff ordinance. And I just grabbed four things that were in common with both of these two items, and so one role is to maximize percolation of rainwater. Another is to maximize runoff from impervious surfaces going directly into the storm drain system, and then of course, directly into the waterways. BNP maintenance plans are required by both, and both encourage rainwater capture and green roofs. And the LID manual, there are a lot of similarities, but one thing about the LID manuals is it provides really, really good extensive guidance and assistance, including online calculators, forms, and checklist, just to make it easier, more consistent for developers and designers.
Eighty-five BNP.
I'm sorry, it's a best management practice, or it's an LID feature. So a rain garden can be considered a BNP, it can also be considered an LID feature. Thank you, Sue. So these are some new requirements. Basically, it's just more specific. It's really not very different, it's more specific. The LID manual specifies what's called a design storm, and that's the eighty-fifth percentile storm, roughly, you can expect that once every two years. In Santa Rosa, that's equivalent to .92 inches falling in a 24-hour period, so about an inch in a day. And so any of the features or BNP's that are implemented through LID must be able to handle at least that level of storm. And the LID manual also specifies a percent runoff that must be treated during the design storm off of impervious surfaces, and that is 100%. And then the LID manual also prioritizes specific BNP's, which the ordinance doesn't. However, the LID manual places as a priority landscape-based features, which again, is consistent with what Sebastopol's doing. So storm water volume capture. It is required that the difference in runoff post-construction compared to pre-construction, again, during that design storm for an inch in about 24 hours, be captured. So if there's more runoff after development than pre-development, that difference has to be captured, infiltrated, or reused, et cetera. The goal is to capture 100% of the runoff during that design storm. For stormwater treatment, and again, this is, this is not chemical treatment, this is just several different ways of removing pollutants from runoff. And that can include biofiltration, tree pod filters, or infiltration. This photo here is of a vegetated swale, that photo was taken from the manual, and it's a really attractive feature, and which, I don't know if you can see it from where you are, but there's some people in the top right. So you've got rainwater that will flow from the pedestrian areas, from the sidewalks, flow through the vegetation, it gets infiltrated, it gets filtered, and that which reaches those cobbles in the middle of the feature, that is slowed down. So that all happens before it reaches the storm drain system, and that's an example of an LID feature. So development triggers. So which proposed development sites would have to comply with this manual? Any proposed site that is going to create or entirely recreate one or more acres of new impervious surface. Also, for specific types of developments, and they're listed there, roads, industrial parks, commercial strip malls, gas stations, restaurants, and auto service facilities, the trigger is down to 10,000 square feet. And the next two items, four more dwelling units or parking lots with 25 or more spaces, those are also required to implement requirements of the LID manual regardless of size. In addition to all of that, any proposed develop, development which is immediately adjacent to or repairing habitat or containing a water body, containing or immediately adjacent to it, must get a resource, a resources permit, a resources agency permit. And so those developments are subject to Regional Water Quality Control Board review. And the regional board has the discretion to require those sites also to implement the LID manual requirements. Okay, so now we start looking at some LID features or BNP's, and this is a disconnected dancebout, which all that is, is allowing for the roof runoff to be directed to landscaped areas rather than straight onto hardscape. And this is low cost, or really no extra cost for LID, and this is already a requirement in the city of Sebastopol. Some of you may recognize this, this is a BNP to prevent pollutant loading. This is taken at the Barlow, and it simply is a roof covering a trash receptacle, so that rainwater does not gather in the trash areas and carry trash or pollutants from the trash into the storm drain system, and that is already also being done here at Sebastopol, as you can see. This is just an example of a rain garden, and that photo was taken in, actually, it's at the Kaiser facility on Old Road Highway. And it's, it's just a design that again, allows for rainwater to be captured, to infiltrate, to filter, and to slow down before it reaches the storm drain system. I'm just gonna show you a bunch of pretty pictures. Here's a bio swell. Again, infiltration, filtration, and slowing the flow. This is, I've been the town of Windsor. Curb cuts, very simple. All this is, is obviously curb is cut out here, and this allows for runoff from the parking lot area to go through gravel and natural areas, vitiated areas, before reaching the waterway, which is on the other side. So again, you have, it has the opportunity, the rainwater to be filtered, to infiltrate, and to slow down. And this kind of design, this kind of curb cut, is already encouraged in Sebastopol's current ordinance as well. These are some permeable pavers, and we have some of those, this is not, hopefully, this is in Sebastopol, but we have some in Sebastopol as well. And all it is, is pavers that are not cemented together, so that rainwater has an opportunity to filter through. This photo is, as you can see, far as lost, and this is Sebastopol, and this is permeable pavement. On the next slide, I've included, this is actually taken in Oregon, it's a rainy day in Oregon, and I included this because, I'm sorry, the word got a little funny here, but you can see the effect. Part of this parking lot was constructed with conventional asphalt, which is in the foreground, and up to the right is actually permeable asphalt, so you can see the difference. It's raining, and in the conventional area, it's shiny, because the rainwater has puddled, it's not, it's not permeating through. I think this is our last pretty picture or so. These are tree pod filters, and this is located in Windsor, and this fulfills treatment requirements of the regional board, does not fulfill volume capture requirements. But what these do, you can't see it, but beneath the sidewalk are large filtration pods. And so runoff from the road goes into the storm, what you're looking at is the storm drain basin or inlet, and it is filtered through engineered media, and it collects the hydro, the hydrocarbons and other pollutants from the roads, from the cars, and doesn't allow it to go into the storm drain system, more into the crease. And I should have mentioned that although that is allowable by the regional board, it's not high on their priority list, but it, but it is allowable. So, cost to developments. It's really highly variable. I've discussed this with several engineers, and we've looked at, done some research and looked at different projects, and it's just so variable. We've, we've seen that a really rough estimate is five to 20% additional cost for construction. And that's based on types of site soils and other site conditions, for example, how steep the, the site is, available space for landscape, and then of course, which specific LID features are selected. And there's really not that much data available yet for sites that have gone through the whole entire process for 100% compliance with this LID manual, because it, it really hasn't been in place long enough for us to have that much data. So it's a pretty rough estimate. LID maintenance costs. So again, long-term LID maintenance costs are highly variable. It really just depends on the site itself and the LID features on that site. The property owner is responsible for maintenance of those LID features, and maintenance agreements for those LID features follow the land title. So whenever a property is sold, that agreement will follow along with the property to the next owner. The maintenance requirements do not default to the city. Administrative costs to the city. Maintenance declaration is required, although that is required now by the city, it's just a little bit more intensive than that, that the city will have to obtain proof that the maintenance declaration or maintenance agreement has been recorded with the county, with the county. And the city will have to track LID features by type of feature and location, track that they're being maintained, and track when there's a change of title. Some of these costs are recovered by development review fees, and the amount of additional costs that this will be, that the city will incur is really going to depend on the level of effort, you know, at the level of, well, how many developments there are actually in the city, and the complexity of the LID features that are included. So, next steps. Again, staff recommends that council recommends adoption of the LID manual, after which the city development checklist and package will have to be modified. There will have to be some staff training, and the city's good to go, gentlemen. So if you have any questions, the United Department will answer questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from the council of staff?
Any questions to staff?
How's it going?
Yep. First of all, thank you. This is very informative. I'm curious, kind of jumping ahead in tonight's program, to the design review guidelines. to the design review guidelines. In the original draft, there was extensive language about use of permeable pavers in parking lots. And my head has spun around so many times doing those that I believe it somehow got deleted. But I don't know if that's an appropriate place to put it or to say that the city's LID guidelines will be incorporated by reference. But kind of taking this one step further, and this is a question possibly to you as both city staff. In a parking lot where you have permeable pavers, are there concerns about automotive fluids leaching into the ground in those parking areas?
Well, yes. And, you know, that's part of the maintenance, you know. With permeable pavers, you would have to have some kind of structural soil beneath it. And that's true for really pretty much every LID feature. So essentially, we were talking about this the other day in our office. Many of these features keep the pollutants there on the site, you know, at the source of the pollutants. So the pollutants are removed from the stormwater, but then they're held there in the soil. Now, some pollutants will dissipate, others will be taken up by the plants. But eventually, you'll have to replace the media beneath the pavers.
Okay. This is just my position as a council member. I'd like to see the city be possibly, you know, put in place a higher standard than what's here for development triggers and mandate permeable paving surfaces in our parking lots. I mean, we have a, the Barlow has huge amounts of hardscape. And I know there's some mitigation measures there, but, I mean, as far as I'm aware, very little of any of the parking areas are permeable. We have the potential of a development at the Leedy site. It's almost two and a half acres, only maybe 25,000 square feet of which is building. And the rest is all hardscape, except for planter strips and things like that. And I know there's rain guards there, but we have a huge parking lot that's basically just a hardscape area. And I'm not saying we can go back and revisit that one. But as we go forward into the future, you know, I've been in parking lots of Whole Foods and other cities where the entire parking lot is a permeable surface. And I think as a city, we should look at that very seriously as far as groundwater recharge in our hardscape areas. And, you know, I'd like to see us possibly even exceed these standards in terms of, you know, where we utilize permeable pavers. However, I don't want to just put all the gas on the LID and all the antifreeze into the, you know. I don't want to solve one problem, create another one.
I guess, if I may comment, that your first comment about the design standards may or may not include LID-like features. It would probably be preferable from an administrative point of view to have it all in one place, rather than to have, you know, several ordinances that all address pieces of LID-type construction, just because if you amend one and forget to change something in all the other ones, it gets kind of messy.
I was saying, incorporate by reference.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be, from a staff point of view, a more workable thing. And just to keep in mind that we have the opportunity to place conditions on development that may be outside of our, you know, as long as our ordinance is met, there's no reason why developer couldn't put permeable paving in a development. However, that may not be the best way to deal with stormwater on the given site. So I think we need to be, you know, a little bit sensitive that maybe not every parking lot should be permeable paving. But there needs to be some level of LID incorporated into any project that it will meet the requirements of the ordinance, which has to do with capture and treatment. There are different ways to spin the cap.
My only response would be, it's easier to ask for more and back from it than it is to not have higher standards and then have to push to get them. I would rather relieve a developer from that requirement than pay them to provide that.
Thank you for the presentation. As I was reading through the PowerPoint slides ahead of this meeting, I was felt very well informed about the standards that are being put forth in this manual. And it seems like a really good idea, especially given our state of drought and the fact that our city gets its water from wells. So obviously, we're very concerned about recharging our aquifer because we're all standing right on top of it right now. So we need to be concerned about that. But what it brought to mind was that there's a much larger space, or a much larger acreage of land that's already developed. And, you know, we can't go and tell everybody to redevelop everything from scratch. But it did bring to mind that these, the ideas in this manual, which have to do with capturing water, slowing it down, filtering it, and helping it to reinfiltrate into the ground, are principles that everybody should be using in their back and front yard. And that as a city, we could be proactive by maybe partnering with and encouraging nonprofits, advocacy groups. Looking at somebody. To educate the public about these kinds of concepts and ideas that everybody could be using in their backyard. So when they're out there redoing their backyard in the summertime, they can be incorporating these concepts into the way they're doing their own landscape. So it's just a thought, but it would be a high-impact, low-cost way for our city to be recharging our aquifer. Alan? All right, thank you. I so appreciate the comments of both of my colleagues, Councilmember Eater and Councilmember Glass. And I look forward to working on the Waterset Committee with Councilmember Glass as we go into next year, because I think there is a lot of that kind of education that we can do that will deal with the individual property that might not be governed by these sorts of more collective policies. So let's look forward to that. I think it's going to be exciting to get into culture, encashment, graywater systems, et cetera. So I just have a couple of questions and comments. I want to make sure we understand what the 80th percentile storm means. I know you're mentioning 0.92 inches in 24 hours, but mine might always think of 100-year flood. And I don't know if those even relate at all. So maybe you can help connect those or disconnect them. Just make sure we understand here.
I'll answer the best that I can. I'm not a hydrologist, but, so 100-year storm is probably impossible to capture, you know, that level of runoff. And so this is, this LID manual is the standard, the 85th, it's an 85th percentile storm. It's just sort of an averaging. And it's just sort of a baseline. So that if there's a storm of that intensity or less, that your site is designed to be able to capture that, to handle that. And beyond that, if someone didn't want to do that, but that, you know, that just takes it a whole other notch, and it would be more expensive. So I'll never find you your question.
Well, I think you did, because what we want to be thinking is a new metric here. To let go of that 100-year flood idea and translate it for these specific policies to about an inch in 24 hours. And that's something we record. My family has a rain gauge on the deck, you know, and we all watch it, and we follow the weather when we do get rain like that. So it's just a good thing, I think, to put in our minds. And I appreciate the opportunity to highlight it with you this evening. I had a comment too about the projects where we might impose these requirements, where it's one or more acres, creating or replacing 10,000 square feet of roads, et cetera, four or more dwelling units, parking lots with 25 or more spaces. I think actually those are standards that are too high. In some way, we want to, we may want to bring those lower. I think this is what Councilmember Eater was saying. Why do we need to wait for 25 parking places in a proposal in this town to implement this? For instance, my office building that Councilmember Slater designed as the architect, I think, has seven parking places on it. And there's really not a reason why that asphalt couldn't be permeable, except that we didn't encourage him at that time. So we might want to talk about having, imposing these requirements or encouraging them with, at lower thresholds, so that we do actually capture more. And then I have a question, and maybe this is for staff, I don't know. I'm just wondering if we, if we put this out there and property owners or development proponents are required to do this, what is our enforcement mechanism to make sure that it is maintained and functioning past the build-out time? And I'm thinking of the parking lots at the county center, you know, like at PRMD, where they have the bio swells and all. And I think the notion is great, but I'm not sure they look good, and I'm not sure they're actually doing what they should be doing. So I'm thinking ahead for us. If we impose this, how is it monitored and enforced? I think Sue's got an answer.
That's the downside, in a way. And it's that it's the city's responsibility to make sure that people maintain these facilities. And in order to do that, we'll have to have these agreements with any developer, you know, before, probably before we sign off on the development or allow occupancy, or, you know, whatever the particular development trigger is that says it's done. We will have to have evidence that they've recorded one of these agreements that runs with the title to the property forever. We will have to monitor them annually to make sure that, you know, I think it's a self-certification process on the part of the property owner, but we'll have to reach out to all of them every year and ask them for a report on how they have maintained these features functional. That is a requirement of the city. I think initially, because our level of development is pretty slow in Sebastopol, that it won't be a terrible burden to begin with, but it could ramp up later because we'll be accumulating projects that we have to monitor as time goes by. But that is the enforcement mechanism. It's basically up to the property owner to do it. It's up to the city to make sure they do it.
We did infiltrate the rains.
Is, I have another question, and that's, is this manual and these standards in response to state law, the state standards? So that's the origin of this?
The origin is the Federal Cleanwater Act, which means it's tripled.
So it's one of those unfunded mandates?
Just math.
Just testing.
Along with the rest of our stormwater.
Thanks, my statement. So you answered the first question, I believe, about policing compliance. And really, it just turns into, anybody who has a project that's enrolled in the program, the engineering department will just send them a letter every year and have it self-reported?
Unless I can figure out a way to make some other department do it.
I don't see riches, riches in years. We'll put it on public works.
Somebody at the city will have to do it.
So the, what's the, what's the staff time look like for something like this? Is this a reasonable request to have as an additional workload?
Well, as I was saying, the level of development that we have right now doesn't look huge to begin with. We'll have some, we'll have some staff time to ramp up to it. We'll have to modify development checklists and application procedures and get a procedure in place. And staff is going to need to be trained to the point where they understand it, those of us who will be dealing with it, which are primarily the development departments. But eventually, as we get more and more projects into this, you know, into compliance with this ordinance, it will grow. And it could be, it could be a big time-taker at some point. Although I don't see the, I don't see the ongoing maintenance, you know, long-term to be huge at first. But I'd say in the future, it could be a pretty intensive staff exercise.
I have, this is the page out of the 2014 California Green Building Standards Code. And Section 8, 4.106.4, water permeable surfaces. And so in our building code, we have, there's Tier 1 and Tier 2. And I'll get into what all that means. But the, there is already a mandate from the state in our building code requiring a fairly nominal amount of, the numbers for Tier 1 are 20% of total parking, walking, or patio surfaces shall be permeable. Tier 2 is 30%. And then there's a couple of exceptions. So I just want to ensure that we are not doing something that is in, that is counter to what we've already been mandated in the building code. It doesn't seem like we are, but I just wanted to bring that up.
I've never heard of the state of California promulgating conflicting regulations before.
I know, it's hard to believe, isn't it?
I think this trumps them. It's, this isn't, this is not optimal for us. This is mandated by the regional board, or punishment will ensue. So, you know, so whether there are conflicts between this regulation and other state regulations, I do not know. I don't know if Christine really knows.
I don't think it is in conflict with the green building code. I know that Santa Rosa has been implementing this manual, and it seems to be working.
I'm not suggesting that it is. I just want to make sure that we're not creating a situation where we have two different standards.
Well, we're not creating.
So, and then, so the other thing, that there was a number in the presentation of 10,000 square feet. And I know for a lot of people that nobody really understands how big 10,000 square feet is. There's a couple of people sitting out there that probably know exactly how much it is. Free, probably. And, so 10,000 square feet, an average lot in town in Sebastopol is around 6,000 square feet. Most corner lots are 7,500. So basically, if you take two standard-sized in old downtown residential lots, that's kind of the space that we're looking at for that little bit less than that. So maybe take the sidewalk off on the front. So the, okay, I'm done.
So I just wanted to add a little piece of, I'm hearingly having higher standards. And we are a town who has a very limited amount of space available. So many times, having a higher standard, how that space is developer used is to an advantage. As a small business operator, though, I ran into this ordinance in Santa Rosa with the expansion of a piece of medicine in Santa Rosa location. And we need to expand the parking lot. And in doing so, the project went from $195,000 to somewhere around $280,000. It made it not possible for a piece of medicine to enact that change because of this wonderful groundwater treatment ordinance that Santa Rosa has implemented. So, based on that personal experience of being a small business operator and running into that significantly, we ended up putting this huge bio swell in the back and having to develop less, which was what it turned out to be. And then ended up not doing the project because it became no longer cost-effective. I would have concerns around us pushing the potential cost to smaller developments higher than what is already set as a standard. There's a state mandate forcing us to do something, and we are complying with. For us to take it upon ourselves to create even more cost to potential development is concerning to me in this particular situation. Not that I'm not for it, I just, I see both sides of the issue. How we're smaller, we need to protect our smaller piece of property. At the same time, I directly understand the burden of and around the expense of trying to implement this type of ordinance in the development. Are we ready to hear from the public?
Please.
Any others in the public? Mr. Congressman? Any others in the public just coming to the side?
Hello, Councilmembers, I'm Catherine Austin-Architect. I'm commenting as a part from my project, which will be coming next. Just to give you a little background, I'm very appreciative of what Mary just said. And I have been working with this ordinance for at least 10 years. My asking architect, Parker Smith, who's lived in here, we've been doing this type of work for at least 12, even even 14 years. About 14 years ago, I married an engineer and geologist from Water Quality Control Board whose business was specifically stormwater issues, and so I lived it at home, I lived it at work. And I know that the manual that Santa Rosa developed is actually being used across the state and in farther afield, because it is very cutting-edge and very comprehensive, and it has excellent examples in it of how we mitigate our stormwater. So I would also like to respond a little bit to some of the concerns that Councilmember Eater raised regarding permeable paving. It was interesting for me to watch the presentation, because I actually designed a lot of the things that were in their spots, and one of them was working on the barlow and the kind of stormwater mitigation that we use there. And while it may look like there's a lot of permeable, impermeable surfaces, they are all canted and drained to those bioswales that you see out there. And part of the benefit of doing that is that if you do have to go back and remove some of the contaminants, you're not digging up the paving, you're digging up the bioswale areas. It's a much easier way of dealing with removing the contaminants and doing the maintenance long-term. If you were having permeable paving, you would have to remove the entire parking lot, dig it up, and redo everything again, and that's cost-redundant, and it wouldn't happen. So if you want to make it so it will happen, then having these alternative compliance methods is preferable. I've done projects where we've used permeable pavers. For instance, in the Litchfield subdivision, all of the private driveways are permeable paving. And what's good about that is you have a limited amount of cars going out of private driveway. It's an excellent location which to do that. They don't hold up very well to garbage trucks and moving vans, and so having them in a major street or driveway is not a preferable location. So there's just a lot of different ways, as I think the representative said, just get a cat. There's a lot of different ways to reach those goals, and sometimes if you're in, for instance, in the San Rosas, plain most of the soil is very adobe, it doesn't percolate through. So having permeable paving is a disaster. It just, it doesn't go anywhere. No, in other words, I support what the mayor said, and I also would urge you to just go ahead and adopt the manual as it is. It's a very good one, we can, we can meet those goals.
Thank you.
Hello, Colin Doyle, Planning Commissioner, speaking on my lead cap. Thank you, Kathy, for saying a couple of things I was thinking about and much more. So I concur with everything that Kathy said. And so at this point, I only have one question. Under this ordinance, for instance, on the cover of the LID manual, it shows some tree wells with a bioswale, bioswale in between, and that's right, right by the curve. So you've got the street, the curve, the bioswale, the sidewalk, and the building. So under most of those instances, that bioswale would be in the public right-of-way, in the public property versus the private property. So under this ordinance and encouraging devices such as that bioswale, would the applicant have the expectation of being able to use the public right-of-way for, as one way of solving the issue? In other words, if there was a proposal to use a bioswale, show, say, shown on the cover, would the city be supportive of that, you know, that's taken away sidewalk weight? So that's the question, that's the question.
Same as the public, I'll close with a comment. Take it back to Councilperson discussion.
Well, I appreciate the input as a public speaker, and I'm appreciative that perhaps there are more cost-effective ways to get the job done. I think, you know, just like a lot of other things in life, you know, when resources get precious, it gets more expensive to deal with them. And, you know, we're in a pretty severe water situation right now, may not be long-lasting, who knows? I don't, certainly. But just like, you know, to get us from fossil fuels to alternate modes of transportation that don't burn fossil fuels, you know, if you were one of the early adopters of electric cars, you paid a lot of money, and you still pay a lot of money. And to get to another place where we conserve our resources, oftentimes it does cost a lot of money. And I just have to say that I think the greater goal of resource conservation can't be buried behind the law of cost. You know, I think there needs to be a balance struck somewhere. That's it.
I wanted to thank Ms. Austin for her comments. They were very illuminating and interesting, and I, I just wanted to say, and I, you know, I'm kind of weighing these two different things, the cost, which the mayor brought up, and our need for preserving resources. And one of our other goals here is to localize, and we're interested in supporting small local businesses. And it's harder for, what's the balance between supporting small local businesses that can't afford to spend as much as big, huge businesses? So what's the balance there? I think that's kind of the big question we're asking. And my question is, really, how, how big an impact is just adopting these standards that already, that are implemented elsewhere? How big an impact are they already having on preserving our water resources? And are there any studies on the kind of impact that they have, that these standards have had on water quality elsewhere in the state?
Well, I think Christina mentioned that in our area anyway, that they have been implemented since 2010 or 2011 by Santa Rosa, the county, and the water agency and the project. I don't think there's data yet, you know, quantitative data yet, but I really believe that this ordinance is taking us to weigh the next level from where we are right now. And this is, it's a very aggressive ordinance and set of requirements. And if it's, you know, if it's going to be implemented uniformly in all of the cities and the county of Sonoma, I think the regional board fully expects it to have a significant impact, but I don't think there's data right now that says exactly what it is. I think it's quite aggressive, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that it's going easy. I think it would have some concern about trying to kind of make up our own more, you know, what we, what we might think of as a stricter requirement, because I don't think any of us has the expertise to do that. Those are just my thoughts. I did, I did have an answer for Colin Doyle's question, though, because that might be of interest to the council. I'm sorry, I don't mean to sidetrack the discussion, but we do have an example of a project where the developer will be placing rain gardens and bioswales within the right-of-way. And that's a CBS project, so when that gets built, that's part of their site design. And the way we'll deal with that is we'll require a maintenance agreement with them, that they may place them in the public right-of-way, that they will be in charge of maintaining that.
I think now we could be in that moment of the balancing. You know, how do we get from our current practices and current designs and what is familiar to something that needs to be part of our future for the purpose of preserving our water storage and our water future? So I think we need to jump into that future and not be constrained right now about the expenses. And one way we can do that and help a small property owner or smaller developer or smaller project, and the projects that fit within these thresholds, is to push this information out so that before people are designing ideas and projects, they've already heard this is what the city is ultimately going to require. And that's the way we move into our future. We just change from where we are now to know, holding on to where we want to be and informing people that's where we're going, so that from the outset, the designs consider these standards and these components, perhaps even if they are smaller than what would apply here. Somebody needs to be brave enough and bold enough and creative enough to design that sort of project and put that forward-thinking project in play so that it then becomes the everyday standard. So I think we, that's the way I want to think about this now, respecting that it can be difficult in terms of affordability for a smaller project.
Everybody beat me to the punch. I was going to start off with talking about, there are comments about the cost, because that was, that was a significant concern for me. The, the project that was the restaurant rebuild up at the end of Fieldsburg Avenue across from Florin Street Lots is an interesting case study, where we did some permeable paving in the parking lot there. However, we were concerned with traffic and the wear and tear on the permeable paving. The solution was to use concrete, which lasts forever, as an apron around the building, sloping towards the permeable paving. The lot was very constrained up there, there wasn't space for things like rain gardens. So the permeable paving was installed where the traffic was last, in the parking stalls, and it was, it's fairly successful, it's quite successful. Unfortunately, it hasn't rained a whole lot since that project was built. So there are ways to approach this from different angles. And I really appreciate the fact that one ordinance will be county-wide. City, every city and the county will have the same procedure, because I know it drives me crazy that Petaluma has a slightly different building code. They changed four paragraphs in five-volume set, and I have to remember that. And the county of Sonoma does the same, and the city of Fieldsburg, and Sebastopol. So to have one standard that everybody understands that doesn't change from municipality to municipality is absolutely key. It, it makes it so much easier for the design professional community to comply with the rules in a way that helps the affordability to owners, because if less professional time is spent researching these different things, that's a cost-saving to the owners where we're asking them to spend more already. So I wholeheartedly appreciate this one ordinance thing. So I'm sure the mayor will have some comments, but I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we adopt, how are we doing this? That we introduce the ordinance repealing SMC Section 15.77 and adopt Section 15.78 Stormwater Low-Impact Development Manual. I'm second then? Some time for discussion?
All that being said, I have a minute to compromise. And so, yeah, I thought that there would, if there's, we are a very small city, and our land is more valuable, and what we have available to us is more valuable, but also our city that is life-dependent on our offer. And groundwater infiltration happening appropriately within our city limits is key to our survival. One day we might be the only town with water in the whole county, you know, we're going to have to deal with that. So, you know, I had some room specifically around the one acre or more, if we wanted to look in specifically, change that one section to .8 acres or more. That was where I had some room, and sort of pushing it just a little bit further for our town, because we have a lot of smaller projects, and naturally that will hit. But I'm also supportive to where it's at now. I just want to put it out there that I was in a hard-on situation. I support the motions on the table, I also would support the motion if we're amended to reduce that specific trigger.
Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions?
We'll take a short break. It comes, I know there's these, this will be pulled out for us to look at, but on the break, we're going to stop and look at these easels on the left here, it's probably going to help. I'm going to take 10 minutes, come back at 7:00 to coordinate.